I think I can fix that right now.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming today. We have called this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is October 8, 2024, and it's 7:07 PM. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Councilman Fay?
Present.
Councilman Musa?
Present.
Councilman Sedman?
Present.
Councilman Wood? Oh, he stepped out. Councilman El Samiri?
Yes, present.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor is here, we have a floor.
Thank you. Please rise for the president, please. I am a patriot of the flag of the United States of America. To the people of our nation, under God, in all glory, just as well. All right, do we have any community announcements?
No, no mayor, not.
No announcements, so we move to proclamation, recognition, and presentations. We don't have presentations or proclamations to read, but we have some certificates to be given to some community members. Some of them requested by some city council members. And I will read the names, and please, when you hear your name, just step to the front and receive your certificate, and then you can take a group picture at the end. We have the first one, Abdul Ali Ahmed, is he here?
No, he's not here.
He's not here? All right.
You're gonna complain?
Mohammed Adwais?
Same.
Not here. All right. Tofil Al Jareen?
Same, he's not here.
So it's us some time for the pictures. Nasir Kai?
Same thing, he's not here.
Greg Kowalski? Not here?
No, that's Kowalski, this is Krishna.
All right. Is this a surprise from the act?
But he spoke too soon.
He's supposed to come in?
No, 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 the next one is who?
Yeah, Greg Krishna.
Krishna, there you go.
Thank you, Greg, for everything you do. Our cameraman, he runs the TV, hamtramck TV.
He's one of them.
And the chair of the...
Well, you have thought so many years, the mayor, he's been doing it.
For so many years. He's one of the people who wrote our charter, by the way. Thank you so much. All right, we have Assem Rahman, he's not here?
He's not here.
Would you like to read the statement now?
I'll read the statement, you know, I have perfect timing. Honorable Councilman El Samiri, honorable mayor, I am humbled and honored by the recognition today. Unfortunately, I am at a board meeting and couldn't be present. It is my absolute pleasure to help serve the community at different capacities. As you know, I served as a trustee and treasurer at the Wayne County Community College. Education is one of my core values, and I try my utmost to encourage education to the new generation. Our college offers various programs and staggered certifications to encourage people to advance their education and skills. Please reach out to the college for further information. Thanks again for the recognition, Assem Rahman.
All right, thank you. So, oh, Al Hassan Ali Shah? Not here?
He's not here.
All right. Mr. Bill Meyer?
Bill Meyer's here.
Bill Meyer. The chair of One Hamtramck, citizen of the world. Yes, who doesn't know Bill Meyer?
They can meet one, it's not one of Hamtramck.
Thanks so much. Abdullah Ikazabi? Thank you. We move to the next section, which is additions and divisions. Do we have any additions or divisions to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right, then we move to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three minutes. Abraham El Jahim, Hamtramck resident?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, police chief, clerk, city manager, and attorney. I have three things to talk about today. First one is the FOIA request I requested on September 20th regarding the text messages and phone calls between Councilman Khalil, Councilman Sumayidi, and city manager Max Gabriano. Today I get a call, and they wanted a check for $57 that I have to give tomorrow to the treasurer, and hopefully I get some answers. Second one, city-appointed elected officials talking about others. You guys have someone in the planning commission, I don't know who appointed him, his name is Nasir Hussein. He should not be in any commission. This defamation of character, what he says on social media. And I hope you guys take responsibility today and do something about it, Mr. Mayor, and council, and city manager. Is that clear, or should I say it again? Third point, support the drone package 2024-134 for the police department. Lastly, thank you all.
Thank you. Khalil Uthman, Dearborn resident? Three minutes?
Three and a half.
Thank you. I'm here tonight...
I'm sorry to interrupt, can you please push the button? Yep, there you go.
Push it. Good evening. I'm here tonight to absolutely acknowledge and thank the mayor and the city councils who took the bold move to endorse former President Donald Trump. I really encourage you guys to continue taking the lead and the path forward, because we have suffered many things in the last couple of years, supporting the Democratic Party. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I was a state representative candidate back in 2022, and when the sexually explicit books came to the surface in the city of Dearborn, thousands of parents came out and protested these sexually explicit books being pushed to our kids in school. The reaction that we received from our democratic leadership in Dearborn, they called these parents religious extremists and bad faith actors. And they continue to push us away. They continue to push us with everything they can to enforce this destructive agenda. I want to remind you, Mr. Mayor and the city councils, who endorsed former President Donald Trump and the Republican Party ticket, you are in the right path. We need, we need to come back to a common sense. We need a path forward to start establishing the connection and the relationship with the people that we believe align with our faith, morals, and religious... Okay, one minute left. Overall, I'm here just to show you that we are behind you. There are hundreds of people in the city of Dearborn, in the city of Hamtramck, they are supporting and rallying with you with that decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mohammed, I know it starts with an S-H, but I'm not sure.
That's me.
What's the last name?
Shadr.
Shadr, Dearborn resident as well.
Assalamualaikum. Abdullah. Inshallah I will speak in Arabic, because I will send this message to resident in Michigan. All Nishkirkum Gula Ajaratkom Watechad Ararikum Baidi kom Bimasaikkom Ashesiyah Wa Ahitmankom B'Guladikum Wahada Hua Al Hadif. Ta'lem America Bi'Chakla Gham Khuzzaan Waliyat Mijin Ma Maret Bihim N'Adzroofal Qasiyafiyat Watechad AlKutub Watechad AlQurarat AlGhir Aqlaqiyah Fi Shudhuza AlJinsi Wa Adam Ra'at Pokuqal Ahali Padalk Pukal Tufel Wa Asharf AlMadas. In Watechad AlHada AlQurarat Hiyatechad AlQurarat Ciba Tubnaga Alaa Xhbrat AlSabaqa Min AlHesba AlDemokrati Li Ma Aujag Yani Fi AlJaliha AlArabiya Bi'Chakla Gham Waliyat AlMetehdal Amerika Wala Siam Ma Akhret AlKutub Watechad AlQurarat Wal Hroub AlDamoiya Lati Tushan Fi Pukma Alaa Ghaza Wal Lubnan Wal Yemen Wal Iraq Wa Alaf Min Admaa Lati Suka Ashkour Umdat Madina Hamtramck Padalk AlMeylis AlBali Sari Council Ladin Gharwatechad AlQurarat Ciba Wa Natanah Min AlAkhwa An Yalhuku Abikum AlQitar Qabla An Yentehi Bhimal Hal Ilaa Ma Yuthkar Fal Mustakbal Min Abnawam Innaum List Ashab AlQurarat Ciba AlMadina Madina Hamtramck Madina Jamila Antma Hakam Haan Nas Wal Minet Thorisin Antma Hakam Haan Nas Cadijin Jalu AlMadina Min Madina Gaajza Fi AlBuniya Takte Wal Turqat Padalk AlAqtsad Ilaa Madina Jamila Hada Yani Inkum Traghum Masaikkom Am Duhduman Anta Gasta Wahdekun AlKullal Garab AlMetehdal Amerika Ou Magzum AlGarab AlMetehdal Amerika Sayet Tabegonak Wa La Ta'ftet Lam Fasbikin Wal Men Shaglin Wal AlQurarat Au Alajnidaat AlAukra Ladin Jannadu Huma AlHesba AlDemokrati Wa Shukran.
Thank you. Najee Al Muthaki, also a Dearborn resident.
Assalamualaikum, everybody. So, I've been an American citizen for over 40 years, originally from Yemen. And to be honest with all of you, I'm here specifically today because I was aware of some disturbing things online being said about the mayor for one thing or another. Excuse me?
No, carry on.
So, my point is that honestly, I'm here today because I saw some disturbing things attacking the mayor for exercising his freedom of speech. We live in the United States of America, where every single human being has...
He's very single, people can hear him.
Oh, okay. So, and my point is, everyone has the right to vote whomever they want, okay? But the disturbing thing to me is some of the attacks that I've seen online for the mayor just because he's endorsing a candidate called Trump. And some of these same people are asking us to vote for Kamala Harris. As a community, how does it make sense that we are voting for somebody who is enabling and giving money, tens of billions of dollars, to a war machine overseas? Israel, their criminal government? We have death and destruction everywhere, Lebanon. We have Yemen everywhere, Palestine, Gaza. We have Ukraine. And yet we're being told we have to vote for Kamala Harris because she's a Democrat? We live in the United States of America, and we're gonna vote whom we want to vote for. And we're gonna follow the mayor 100% all the way. And one last thing, I want to say this to my fellow American citizens. The same person, Kamala Harris, we have Dick Cheney endorsing her. Dick Cheney, this is the architect of the Iraq War, where a million, over a million Iraqis were killed. Thousands and thousands of Americans were killed. He is endorsing her. John Bolton, a war monger of epic proportion, is endorsing her. And we're being told that we have to vote for this, these type of people? You know, I know, there is no change if Kamala Harris is elected. At least with Trump, we have a chance. We have a shot at an actual change, where we're actually putting Americans first. My last point is this. I want everybody to think about something. We live in the United States of America. Our citizens are hurting right now, this very second, due to the hurricane disasters. And yet we don't have enough money to send them. Hundreds of dollars, the government said that's all they could give them. They lost their entire livelihoods. Yet we have hundreds of billions of dollars to send to Ukraine, tens of billions of dollars to send to Israel. How does that make any sense? Thank you.
Thank you. Fahed Obaid, Hamtramck resident? Oh, did you want to speak now or at the end? Because you marked the second.
Was that the end?
You want to, you want to speak now? Okay, just speak into the mic.
Assalamualaikum. I do not have the shaka'ah. Because of the city, I am in charge of inspection. Antma Yakhriya inspection, the mother will youlthak Aisha AlRishka AlAgrab Lati Anta Tsalha Bil Bayt. Aisha AlKutb Haq AlCity. Yakhriya inspection, Yasir AlAgrab. Wal Inspection AlI Badeh, Yidim Yidim Lak Agrab Ghair AlAgrab Lati Qarina Owa. Thani Shaim Ma Yulthak Aisha AlMatloob Manak. Wal Antma Di Ta'man Mu'ad LaSpection. Ma Yhadilak Shal Mu'ad Min Ta'ik Ma Yakhriya LaSpection. Yhasublak Min Ta'ik Ma Di Ta'man LaSpection. Tiba Na Ma Di Ta'man LaSpection. Adulid 18i Day Lama Yakhriya LaSpection. Yani Ma'ak 10 Day Ash Ta'man Wal Antma Chalshna Mal Tussal AlCity Ma Hadil Wa Madma Yentehi Yidim Alk Albin Ha'Qual Tiba Na Issebul Mal Tussal AlCity Ma Hadil Gmna Resail Ma Hadil Zoroin Nak Zalit AlCity Fana Chgalik Fana Ta'Man LaSpection Wa Madla LaSpection Lati LaYakhri Hal LaYakhri Haseb AlKutb Ou La Haseb Ras Haseb Mat
Thank you.
Can you please exchange your contact with the city manager, and he will address that? So basically, he was complaining about the inspectors, that one person will come, mark some stuff that needs to be fixed. Another person will come and mark new stuff after the first ones are fixed. We have been complaining about this, too. We mentioned that previously, and he's complaining about the time restraint law. That they don't give enough time to fix the stuff, and then they get violations. So please, communicate with the city manager, and he will address your concern, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Hassan Awon, Dearborn resident? Three minutes?
Good afternoon. My name is Hassan Awon. I live in Dearborn. You know, it's kind of disturbing yesterday when I opened the newspaper, and you see Mohammed Hassan, city council member, speaking about the mayor because he's running for a mayor position. That's the sad part. You want to criticize the mayor. Sit there and say the mayor does not speak for you. The mayor speaks for himself. I'm a Lebanese person, from Dearborn, and I represent Dearborn, right? I don't represent nobody. What I do is I'm following the Hamtramck mayor. He made an endorsement. Innocent children have been slaughtered overseas. My family has been killed overseas. And we got Kamala Harris with blood on her hands. And you have 250 people that he said went to endorse Kamala Harris. Endorse her for what? What is there to endorse her? Just to let you know you're FOIA, but because you're playing with your phone. Under, yes, yes.
Recording.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You cannot play recordings. You cannot touch your phone with what's it called? I will be sending a FOIA regarding you. Yeah, okay. Anyways, you want to criticize the mayor thinking that you're better than the mayor? Let me ask you something. $10 million you got defunded by the Democrats because of the flag situation. Oh, you forgot about that, right?
It was...
But you, yeah, I was here, and you got defunded $10 million. Yeah, you did. I will FOIA the $10 million that Democrats took from you, but you want to sit there and act like nothing happened? Republicans have family values. If you want the Democrats, let's suspend the rules right now, and we can take road call and put the flag back. If that's what you want, you were sitting right here telling them that you don't want the flag. And you sat here and you criticizing the mayor in the newspaper because you're running for a position? Shame on you, man. It's all in the papers. The papers don't lie. You spoke about it. I don't understand, people, understand something. This gentleman made a decision because the Democrats have a bad agenda regarding our children.
Point of order.
Yes.
Councilman, you have to address the mayor, the chairperson.
I am addressing the mayor. I am addressing the mayor.
You're looking at him.
Well, I can look anywhere I want. Does it, I can look anywhere I want. I can look over here and address the mayor. Mayor, I'm addressing the mayor. Mayor, you got a city council, name of Mohammed Hassan, that criticized you. And the criticism that he's doing, that because of his agenda, because he's trying to run for mayor. And I support you 100%. Just to let everybody know that Donald J. Trump will make America great again. Because all this stuff that's happening in his schools is very terrible. That Democrats have blood on their hands. My family has been killed, slaughtered. And we got a gentleman over here that went to see Trump, got probably mad, I was there. He probably got mad because he didn't take a picture with Trump. But let me tell everybody something. This is not about pictures. I don't want a picture with Trump. I want an immediate ceasefire. That's what I'm asking for.
Thank you, Hassan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Meyer, Hamtramck resident?
While we're here talking, yes, people have mentioned that there's many people being killed, slaughtered in the Middle East right now because of our policies in the US. This has to do with the Democratic Party, for sure, but it also has to do with other people in this country. We've had Republican presidents that have had wars, also killed many people. Problem is our policies in America. And what I'm going to say now, as you probably know this, I'm not a Democrat or Republican. People say there should be a third party. When I say there should be a second one. Because these two parties are both supporting war. They're war mongering, these are being ruled by the ruling elite. You can condemn both sides if you want to condemn one. And I believe what the Republicans are saying about the Democrats, and I believe what the Democrats are saying about the Republicans. Yes, we have to stop war. We have to stop the US policies of terrorism. Because, let me share a few quotes with you. One is from Noam Chomsky. He said that everybody is worried about stopping terrorism. Well, there's a really easy way. Stop participating in it. War is terrorism. And our country has been in 100 wars, involved in 100 military actions since World War II. Over 100, probably 200. Our country has made billions of dollars in the war industry. There's people benefiting off of us, Republicans and Democrats. The people are losing. These big corporations are making money head over heel, arms manufacturers. We have to know who our enemy really is. And it's not the Republicans, and it's not the Democrats. They love to divide and conquer. That's how they do it in the Middle East. They get Shiites fighting Sunnis, they get, over here they get Republicans.
Point of order.
Over here they get Republicans fighting Democrats. This is divisive. We have to find a way to work together and bring the country together and stop war. Like one guy, Howard Zinn said, "There's no flag large enough to cover the shame of killing innocent people." You know what happened in our country when we formed this country? I've been a citizen for, I've been a citizen for over 80 years in this country. I voted since John Kennedy. I voted for John Kennedy back in the 60s. I know how elections go. I know how divisive it gets and how people hang with the newspapers. I can show you the headlines of our paper here in town, online. They love to go after our mayor and divide this community. And some people are Democrats, some are Republicans. So what? You're Republican, a Democrat, it doesn't matter. You all have to work together, and you've been doing a great job up there. So let's not let this sort of thing divide our council and our mayor and our people in the city. We're doing very well, working together. One, can I ask one more?
Yes.
So, did I say Howard Zinn said, "There's no flag large enough to cover the shame of killing innocent people"? And we've been killing innocent people since the beginning of this country. You know all about the Native Americans that were slaughtered. You know about slavery in this country. Well, there's this saying, that the Native Americans have this saying about what happened to them. They said that they arrived, this means the white man came to America. They arrived, they had the Bible, and we had the land. They asked us, "Close your eyes and pray." So we closed our eyes, and when we opened them, they had the land and we had the Bible. And that's what's happening everywhere in the world with people like our government. Now please, defend peace, anti-war. Thank you.
Thank you. Martell De Vivings, US candidate for, I'm sorry, candidate for US Congress. Welcome, three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first time at a Hamtramck city meeting, and I thank you for having me. I definitely would love to sit and talk with you just to learn the history of the city. Mr. Mayor, I had opportunity to speak today before Vice President Vance, J.D. Vance, got up. And I, the essence of my speech was about leadership and it not being comfortable. And having to make the uncomfortable, lonely decision for something that will reveal itself later. I thank you for, what seeming from this meeting to make an uncomfortable decision to stand with the president that may not be immediately with your party, but for the benefit of your people that will reveal itself later. I'm a Detroit resident born in Detroit. And back in the early 1950s and 60s, Detroit was very much so like Hamtramck. It was a predominantly black city. We were strong family values. We had men at the head of our household. Religion was the center of our lives and we leaned into democratic policies. And what you see in Detroit in the black household is a product of that. And those same policies that tore down many families in my city are policies that are trying to creep its way into the culture and values of your city. And I think, Mr. Mayor, the stance that you took deserves the essence of the population of your city as far as culture, religion, family values, education. And it's probably more uncomfortable for you as a leader of a municipality. But I could tell you, it's extremely hard and arduous being a black Republican in Detroit in this timeframe. But it's the work that has to be done. I am running against Cherie Tanenar, an outsider who does not care about you, who does not care about I. And he is playing us all under the opposite of mobility. And I'm asking you, and I'd love to work with all of you, to get in front of more Hamtramck residents and communicate who I am, what I am, my work ethic. I work at the Detroit Economic Growth Corporation. I helped to open over 50 businesses. I helped to save the Kona Young International Airport. And in fact, when I was in Councilman Scott Benson's office, I was a part of the initiative to create the sign of Woke, Move, Make a Town. And even through that process, I understood the implementation of language and the proper language for this community. And I'm still learning and I still have a host to learn. But I do want to work with you and learn and preserve our community and preserve the culture. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the public counter.
All right, thank you, everyone. Now we move to the consent agenda. This is approved, no single motion with no discussion. And we have the first item, approval of minutes from September 24, 2024, regular city council meeting. B, approval of voice register date ending October 8, 2024. C, approval, pre-approval expenditure date ending October 8, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No.
Thank you. And we have a public hearing now. We have resolution 2024-120B, approving public hearing and second reading of Hamtramck zoning ordinance text amendment, chapter 155.
Motion.
Second.
All right, that's our motion to open the hearing.
7:35?
7:35.
No public?
No comments on this one?
Abraham did leave, right?
He did leave.
Okay, then no.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to close publicly.
Second.
Thank you. So it's seven?
7:35?
7:36.
6.
6.
All right, any further discussion on this one? No sir, my council.
Vote?
We can go and vote.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution, oh, and Mr. Mayor, do you want to vote?
Ah, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-120B approved.
Thank you. All right, this is approved finally. Now we move to the new businesses. We have item eight, resolution 2024-131, approving the tree removal and trimming debt of Detroit Arborist collective.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to speak on this tonight. John is unable to attend tonight, so I'll cover for DPS on this one. We did go out for RFP on a new tree trimmer for the city. We got a total of, I believe, nine bids in, quite the range of pricing. Detroit Arborist was near the bottom. It wasn't at the exact bottom, but it was like very, very close. The reason we did select them over the very bottom one, though, was because the actual owner of the company is an actual trained arborist. And we've also had the pleasure of working with him on some miscellaneous projects around the city. The owner volunteers a time on some of our grants. And we've got to actually know this company as opposed to taking a company for literally a few dollars off the street. We would prefer to go with them. Their pricing is really good and they are, they also live locally as well. So I asked that council, Humboldt, approve this bid.
So, so that amount of money is what, monthly or?
It's as needed. It's, they bid it for the size and diameter of the tree and emergency calls and such. So if we don't have a lot to cut, then it stays low. If they come out and we're cutting trees on a weekly basis, then obviously it'll blow.
All right, any further discussion about the council?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, councilor Fai, go ahead.
Because John is there, here, so I won't talk to you direct. How come other companies are right on here so we can see what the prices are?
There, there's this spreadsheet on there, sir.
I don't, I'll see.
It's, um.
The tree trimming bid Excel, oh, hold on, let me see.
Yep, that's, it's the Excel sheet. It has all, all the companies listed across with all the pricing, with the bids they made, ranging from an 11-inch diameter tree, all the way up to a 48-inch diameter tree. It also has the stone removal price, the emergency call-out price, and the emergency weekend price on there, all broken down. It's vastly, there are some strange differences, but overall, they're very near the bottom.
And previously, which company did we have last year?
I don't recall the name.
Are Lim Walkers?
Is it, was it Lim Walkers? Yeah, I think it is Lim Walkers.
And did they bid?
They're on transfer.
Okay. I don't know, but, uh, the prices on here are just. A question, how come RDPS cannot do this kind of work yet?
We are in a limited capacity. I hope to eventually take on more of this role. I mean, as you know, we are bringing a lot of stuff in-house, but it's just a matter of having the resources to do it. As you know, we're, we're doing like the light stuff now. When we respond out to a street for the street sweeping, the cleaning and whatnot, we're doing the low-hanging stuff. But removal of a whole large tree is still kind of beyond us at this point, but we're probably going to head that way.
Well, if we have enough men in RDPS, we have the tools that she has brought up, we approved on. I think we have the men, we have the power of us doing it. Instead of hiring a third private company that will do the same thing that we're able to do.
It is, councilman, somewhat of a skilled trade to some degree, climbing trees, large trees, taking them down. Little stuff we are doing, 100%, like if it's a small tree, I've had DPW go and rip it out. But when you get to trees that, you know, have potential four-inch diameter, that's a little bit beyond some of the skill level. You would want a professional doing that. Not to say that our crew won't eventually get to that point, because I hope they do, but it's going to take a bit of time.
And that time will be a year?
I'm not going to put a time limit on here, because as you know, it is hard to recruit people, maintain people, and we have a lot going on right now. But we're not wasting time on taking over, you know, projects for sure.
Well, hopefully then you will have somebody ready to be doing this work next year. Because if I'm council next year, this one, I'm going to be a full period. All right? That'll be all, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say, take the opportunity to maybe trim all those trees that necessary to trim, because this year we are having issue with street sweeping due to the, you know, trees and everything. So make sure that take the advantage of good weather and just make sure it's getting ready for next year. We don't get excuse for, you know, we can, you know, track because we need to trim.
We, we most certainly are, councilman. We're, as I've said before, we're, when we attack a street, we're kind of doing it on all levels. You know, we're doing the trimming, the street sweeping, the vacuuming, a little of everything, all, all in one shot. So I'm hoping that they hit every street before the snow flies. It's a little ambitious, but I mean, they are moving pretty good.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, John is not here. Who is the company cutting the trees at this moment?
Lim Walkers had the contract, they're out of contract. We are here and there using Detroit Arborist a little bit to fill in on some of the small stuff and then also our DPW is filling in as well.
Including last Friday, residents coming to, three of those residents complaining. They come into, for their request to check the tree and cut the tree. Nobody even cared about this, they don't do anything else there.
So we were having some timely issues with our former contractor. And that is actually one of the reasons why we have been using others and some of our DPW to fill in to try and speed that up a bit. And that is one of the reasons why we bid it out.
Should I tell those residents to come back again and remind you guys?
Just give me a list of which ones you're talking about, I'm happy to look into it. Did we not get out there at all?
No.
Okay, just give me the list so I can follow back up.
As the resident told me, and I will call sometimes for the one behalf of them.
Well, we did, we were, we have done a lot recently and I know there was some sporadic ones.
I don't know how come they're going to pull behind, but I'll let you know and I'll let them know also.
Always happy to follow up, councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can go and vote.
Councilman Fai?
No.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
No.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-131, approved, quarter two.
All right, thank you. All right, next one is resolution 2024-132, approving memorandum of understanding with Michigan Department of Treasury.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is also mine to speak on. In years past, the Michigan Department of Treasury has offered and we've accepted to pay for brief audits and presentations from Plant Moran. As you know, they've been here before and gave us a presentation on our forecast. Again, I reached out to them this year and they've agreed to do an even more in-depth one for us and agreed to provide $30,000 to pay for Plant Moran to do, do that for us. This resolution is simply to accept that money and then move on to the next, the companion resolution appointing Plant Moran.
All right, so we remember past two years, they had two completely different reports. One is very optimistic, one was very pessimistic. The first one was horrible prediction. Then following years, they came and we had surplus and stuff and they were like, we don't know what you guys did, but it seemed like we were good until 2028. I hope they will stick with that prediction.
Well, let's see, one of the things we are doing this time is they're redoing all their groundwork. That's why it's a little bit more expensive than the last couple. And they're starting from scratch. So I'm hoping it's a lot more detailed, more on point.
All right. Any further discussion on this?
No, sir.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-132, approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2024-133, approving professional service agreement with Plant Moran.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is the companion resolution to the one you just approved, basically awarding the bid to Plant Moran and then also awarding them the ability to come in as needed for sporadic finance as needed.
All right, so vote please.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So just want to let you know, when Michigan State came here, they brought Plant Moran in, in Hamtramck City. Worst accounting firm ever I see in my life. Cannot make the paperwork, cannot print out the paper. Now he, he got some connection over there and they hired him to come here, give the $30,000, get it here. So your statement was first one, first year and last year, I said, I don't know what you guys did, did you not do that? Nothing. So that kinds of accounting firm.
Anything else?
The other time?
No, sir.
Councilman Hassan?
No.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sadman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-133, approved.
All right, two more to go. Next one is resolution 2024-134, approving the purchase of a drone package for the police department.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have the chief of police here, Mr. Scott, to speak on this one.
Sorry. Give me, I like to. Good evening. Won't take too much of that time. The reason why we have our prime analysis here, Andrew Robb, says that he's an expert in this and he's going to, you know, spearhead this program, which is very important. When we first came here, you know, we discussed about the three Ts, something that Commissioner Bryan, who's a former NYPD commissioner, most commissioner, is that the three Ts are we build trust and training and technology. And that's something I'm very passionate about, building trust through the youth academy, engage in our community. Training, we just started our internal affairs training, which I promised the mayor and the council that we will have someone here who will follow up on some of the complaints that we get against our officers. So Sergeant Golda just recently graduated and finished his internal affairs investigation course. And now technology, technology helps us keep the Hamtramck safe. And I think some of the brothers are, can mention about threats to you and council. These are the technology tools that's going to help us keep this safe. Obviously, this privacy concern is something Andrew will address. Go ahead, Andrew.
Honorable manner, councilman, good evening. I'm not sure if you read the proposal that was given to you yet. Just a quick, I won't go through it verbatim, but what I will do is just give you a quick glance. Police departments around the country, especially larger ones, have access to very expensive aerial systems, helicopters, small airplanes, Detroit, MSP are the two of the closest to us, with access to those. Those cost millions of dollars, something the city of Hamtramck does not have or many other smaller agencies don't have access to. However, with recent advancements in technology and productivity in the drone field, it's now becoming a reality that smaller police departments can access very similar, if not the same, technology that larger departments have with their helicopter programs in a drone. And that's one of the things that the city of, the Hamtramck Police Department is looking to obtain. We're looking to do that with the Axon Corporation. Axon already provides our body cameras, car cameras, tasers, and specialist, the interview room, the specialist recording technology. They also maintain what is called evidence.com, which allows us to seamlessly communicate with the prosecutor's office as well as other agencies and now the public. Recently rolled out a testing phase of community requests, which saves our detectives and our officers countless hours of time during investigation. Because now we can just send a request to the victim asking for video, pictures, any of those things, and they can upload it directly to us. And that saves us time from having to go out in the field and collect those things. It allows our detectives and myself to spend more time on the crime itself rather than gathering the, you know, tertiary evidence. The cost of the program is approximately $40,541.97 per the quote that you were provided. Not all of that is for the drone hardware itself. The drone hardware itself, if you'll pardon my paper shuffling. The hardware itself for the drone is $16,461.40, a significant discount overall from what MSRP is. And then we also have a spotlight that was added on, a speaker and a mic, an IR filter that goes along with the FLIR camera that's built in, that will allow us to use it at night. Just a little bit of highlights about the Skydio X10. One of the concerns I saw online was that drones like that only stay up for like 10 minutes. This drone is equipped with three batteries. Each battery has the capability to remain in the air for 40 minutes. And that's with using its AI-assisted flight to make sure that it's not crashing into things or we can tell it to go to a GPS location, it will fly there for us after launch. It only takes 40 seconds to deploy from out of the case to in the air, 40 seconds. Back to the 40 minutes, I'm sorry. There's three batteries for that drone. So 40 minutes per battery is two hours and 15 minutes total. And that doesn't include if we recharge one of those batteries in the interim. Yes, privacy concerns is the chief brought up. Currently, we already have several privacy policies in place as part of our rules and regulations that cover our cameras, our surveillance cameras on City Hall. Those are very stringent. You're not allowed to move them to look into people's homes, you're not allowed to move them to look into cars. That same sort of policy would be crafted around the drone program. You wouldn't be allowed to use it just to spy on people in the city. That's not what this is for. This is not only for the public safety, but also officer safety. If you have a barricaded gunman shooting something along those lines, somebody fled into a backyard with a gun, a drone is a lot more effective to go look for that person in the sky than it is to send an officer back there blind who could possibly be killed.
Well, I'll just touch on just a little bit of some of my experiences with the drones. As a commander in a, in a precinct in Queens, we actually had a lost child and the drone actually helped us locate this child. You know, you're talking about breaking the city, there's parks, there's a lot of people. We put that drone up and we actually identified where this child was, about three years old. Now, this kid, this child could have been kidnapped possibly, right? So it's all about timing. This technology does help us keep us safe. Also, we had an incident where it was a barricaded person in there and there was hostages involved. You know, sending our officers in there, not knowing what's in there, what's going on, what they're going to engage. Sending a drone up gives us a little indication of what landscape is and where they are. So there's a lot, and many of the departments, our neighboring department, obviously Detroit, they're born, they're born high, it's even lovely to have a drone program.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the?
Mr. Mayor, how much do you say it's going to cost? $40,000?
So the overall impact would be $40,541.97. The majority of that comes out in fiscal year 2024 for $21,747.93. After that, it's an impact per year of $4,698.51 for the next four years.
And this is also out of narcotics funds and will not affect the general fund?
For pictures.
Mr. Chair, if councilor Fai, go ahead. I saw my own drone, DJI, and it costs 1,500. So, you know, the price for this is just crazy. And I think our city is not ready for this. You know, as I fly my own drone and my neighbors go crazy, or there's FBI spying and stuff. So I think we're doing well without a drone in our city. Maybe it's not the time for it now, you know, and the price for it, I think it just is too much.
If I may comment on the price of the drone, this is a military and law enforcement grade drone made directly by Skydio. There are some higher-end surveying companies that use it to survey bridges and those sorts of things for 3D scanning. But for the most part, this is a law enforcement and military waterproof rated. It's, not only does it have the AI capability along with its piloting, landing, taking off, GPS programming, but it also is electromagnetically shielded. So there's a lot of extra tech that's packed into that package.
Yeah, but also the data that there is also transferable with the data that we have with Axon technology, with the body cams, with the drone as well as here. And like I said, at the end of the day, sometimes we had an incident, we chased that vehicle and we called Michigan State Police and they sent that actually aviation. You know how much it costs just for aviation, just to drive around? This will save a lot of money. But at the end of the day, it keeps us safe. God forbid, we do have incident, we have that drone, we put it up there. This, this drone is not for entertainment purposes whatsoever. The only way it will be, you know, engaged or used is when there's a crime in progress or someone's life is in danger. We'll put that baby up, that's about it. It's not something that's going to be up in the sky 24 hours, no way. That's why we have the internal affairs investigator here that's going to manage and obtain this. And that's why it's important. But like I said, this, this drone stays where it is. When we need it, it comes up, it's in the sky. It's not just there monitoring people. Well, you had the Liberty event, for God forbid, if we had that. When you have the Labor Day event, for instance, God forbid, if we had that statement since another neighboring area where they had a big shooting, we have the drone capability. Even though we have people at the, you know, at that Labor Day festival, we have people on the roof watching, but having that extra drone just saves us a lot of energy, manpower, reduces a better look. And at the end of the day, we're not looking to, you know, spy on anyone, you know, here. You can only use it, then there's obviously legal, you know, protocols that we have to follow.
Mr. Chair, I may view it, you guys, more equipment is better for us. But my opinion is, we purchased so many things and passed PMS this year. So let's show people that things are working, we have extra police officers, you know, we're speeding up to the right position, right direction. I think we should wait to get the drone and, you know, let's, whatever we have, let things put in the works, so people, community, that things are working, things are much better than before, and we need extra equipment to make it much better, better position for the city. So that'll make our community appreciated, maybe. This is my thought.
Councilman, if I may, all the equipment is being put to use very well, including all the cameras around town are tremendously helping with investigations and to keep the community safe. This is just another tool to do that with and also keep our officers safer. As the chief touched on, you know, quite often, we have fleeing suspects, whether it be in a car or on foot of that nature. And, you know, when an officer's pursuing someone on foot, you never know what's coming around the next corner. If we have a drone with FLIR technology, which is basically seeing the heat of the body heat, you could literally send this up and get ahead of that officer in the foot chase and literally track the bad guy and see what he's doing. So that when the officer's coming around that corner, he doesn't get ambushed. Or when the officer's chasing after him, if he gets winded, the drone can keep up with that person, because they ain't shaking the drone, just to give it enough time for the officers to then regroup and get around him. I mean, the advantage of having this is so great. And I know it seems expensive, but can't put a price tag on some of the things this thing can do for our officers or police department in our city.
Nor can you put a price tag on possibly saving an officer's life or a civilian's life within our city. If I may also comment, you had mentioned spending a lot of money and seeing the results of that. I had mentioned it previously on the CompStat recording a couple of weeks ago, but one of the technologies that you guys have implemented, I'm more than happy to talk about it after the meeting if you'd like, we've recovered thirty-six cars and it's led to thirty-one arrests, and that's only in the several months since we've had it active. So we are utilizing the technology. It's not always a publicized thing, but it is being utilized, it is being utilized for the benefit of the citizens.
Yes, I get a phone call last week, someone stated my car being stolen for almost a month, and no information yet. So even you saying good things, I know that I was seeing in the Facebook and your report, but this is what, not coming up with the community, you know, we can't just listen to you guys, you gotta listen to other side.
No, I completely understand, but that is one of the things, someone could have their bike stolen, and I'm not saying that that's not a big thing, but we can't fully prevent crime, we can't stop a hundred percent of the crime. The only thing that we can do is continue to get better at it and utilize all the tools that are available to us to do so.
And not only that, councilman, but you're not gonna recover everything. I mean, some cars are just gone for good, never to appear again. You know, we don't know where they go or where they don't, I mean, you know, but some are chopped up overseas at this point, you know, I mean, it's just, some are just not gonna get recovered. But we're doing a heck of a lot better and I'm catching them and recovering them than we were before without the technology.
Mr. Chair, so you're telling me that this will be useful if there's a crime, that means if there's a crime happening, we're gonna let the officers hold on, get that drone, let it fly, and wait until the person calls a harm? I think we're not ready for this.
No, it's weird. I think it's a misunderstanding of how we use drones, chief.
So I think our city is not ready for this, our residents are not ready for this, I'm not gonna add to more calls we're already getting because there's a drone flying on top of my house. So I think if you guys spend this money and adding cameras on intersections, what we really need on, better than having this drone, that will fly for no reason.
Yeah, just to add on, and like I said, I have a lot of experience in these drones, and ever since this, we actually saved lives. There was someone who actually kidnapped somebody and their life is in danger, and that drone saved his life, so that is well worth it. Trust me, if my child lives here, God forbid he's lost, I wish that drone was there. Because there's special technology within that drone that will sense heat, it will know where that kid is. Not only that, if we're chasing a perpetrator who's inside a house, I can't access him here, but if I get that drone to go up a third floor and I can see through that window, it'll help me save someone's life, maybe yours.
To also give you one further thing about the inclusion of the technology, it's not as if only dispatch can see that. If the officers are on the road and say they're dealing with a barricaded gunman, they're dealing with, you know, a lost child, they can pull that up on their phone and see what the drone sees as they're on that call, if necessary.
We never had an issue, even we have received calls, thanks God that, you know, you guys were able to do what you guys need to do. If you guys focus on, maybe instead of wasting this on a little drone, you guys should focus on installing cameras of intersections that might help our city.
Councilman, if I may, I am all for any more cameras around with FLIR, or around with the flock as well, but just to touch on what you said a moment ago about where the officers would wait, the officers would never wait for the drone per se, but I was quoted on hearing that this drone, I mean, it doesn't have to go down streets or stop at stop signs or anything. I think it would take about two minutes, if I'm not mistaken, for this drone to make it all the way across the city, as opposed to a police car that could take maybe three times that amount, you know, if it's stuck by traffic or caught somewhere, you know, so, I mean, this thing is fast, it's not gonna.
If I may add, this drone is not just officers waiting to use the drone, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a vehicle, this drone is here when we need it for those instances, like I mentioned. Child is missing, barricaded ADP, hostage situation, that's when we need the drone. It's not just gonna be going there, these guys are playing with drones, no. It's only when those situations occur, or active shooter, God forbid we have an active shooter, Labor Day festival, a lot of people come in, invite someone, come in with a rifle, we have intel that someone might be a threat to a community or anywhere, we put the drone up. So it's not like they're gonna be using the drone, it's only when those incidents arise, we have the tool available.
And if I also may comment, the trained drone operators would not necessarily be the officers in the cars, the officers are still gonna be heading there, would be the supervisor at the desk, in coordination with another employee that would handle the piloting and the movement of the drone while the officers are still waiting to respond.
Public safety.
Or still responding, I should say.
Any other comments by other council members?
Go ahead and go. Councilman Sedman?
No.
Councilman Musa?
No.
Councilman Rafai?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud?
No.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, no.
Councilman Hassan?
No.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-four one thirty-four failed.
All right, and then probably you need to try again, I mean, John would try three, four times until he gets. So maybe next time, good luck. I mean, we have two things that's worth hundreds of thousands of dollars, but this should be okay, maybe if you try again. So thanks for trying to improve the service, the public safety service, thank you.
Try to achieve.
So the last one is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-five, dissolving Sarah Guret, scattered site NEZ.
Motion second.
Mr. Mayor, I have Isabel to speak on this, this is the continuation of our NEZ project in the initial dissolving, but I'm not gonna steal Isabel's thunder.
Thank you. Rhonda's gonna pull up some slides for me, which have been included in your materials already. My job here today is to explain Hamtramck's path forward with the NEZ process, and the city attorney has prepared a resolution for you today to adopt and take the next step, so we'll discuss that too. These are the steps we've completed so far, including updating our percent calculations to account for the existing NEZ zones that the city had that we were not aware of when the process began early this year, which you're well aware of. And we also completed creating a timeline for a staggered adoption process that chunks this into essentially two phases for council to adopt. Next slide would be great. Thank you. So these are our immediate next steps in the process. Today, council will vote to dissolve NEZ zones that caused the state to block the city from adopting the new NEZs earlier this year. You can see those on the next slide, Rhonda, please. So this is the map that we've worked with Hennessy to update that includes all of the proposed NEZ zones that we will be moving forward with in yellow. In blue are the zones that you'll be voting to dissolve today. So you can see that four of those have overlap of the five proposed zones that we'll be moving forward with. And the city attorney can answer more questions, and so can I about why those were formed, but dissolving the scattered sites will again make room for the four zones that you'll adopt in phase two of the process. Next slide, Rhonda, please. So our next steps on the twenty-second of this month, so the next council meeting will be to hold a public hearing to adopt Site One, which is within our first phase here, that's in yellow in the bottom right. And you can see in this map that at that time, all of the scattered sites will be dissolved. And then on the twenty-sixth of November, you'll be able to vote to officially adopt the resolution and then send that NEZ zone to the state for approval. That goes to the state tax commission. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-four one thirty-five approved.
Thank you. All right, with that, we come to the end of the new business, and we move to the reports, which I will start with my report, actually, I don't have much to say, I just wanna thank everyone who showed up tonight, and everyone who is here to either support us or criticize us, we welcome all different opinions, we will continue to serve our residents equally, no discrimination in the city regardless of any different political views. So there's so much going on, but we wanna talk about here in this meeting. And I wanna take rest of my time to just probably suspend the rules and call those people who weren't here to give them a certificate. I see some people here, some of them are probably sick, they can't stand or stay here for long, so we'll call their names.
Just give a second for this.
Yeah. All right, everybody in favor?
Yes.
So we have Nasr Kai.
Camera.
Yeah, you didn't mention the last name, you didn't mention the last name. Yeah, we can change it.
Who sent me the name?
I sent it to you. So Greg is not here?
Abdul Ali Ahmed Kai.
Hassan is not?
Tofi. No, he's not there.
All right, thank you guys, with that, we come to my, the end of my report. Thank you all again for coming. So communicate with our leader, please, and he can give you the ID to copy the right now. All right, with that, I come to the end of my report, not much to say today, but again, would like to see you guys again in the next meeting. Next report is for Mayfutam.
Good evening, thank you everybody who came here, and thank you the people who received the application. I highly remember those people, and my condolences goes to those people. One year ago, October seventh, Gaza and all about the surrounding people, then the war started, and two days after one year, one day, still, nauseous, but nothing going on. This is the reason we call the city of Hamtramck, first time, we send the proclamation to stop the war, and a lot of things behind us, finally, it's people of Michigan, so uncommitted for anybody, for Republican or Democratic parties. And end of the one year, we see the war doesn't get stopped, gets spread. All the innocent people, kids, women, everybody is killing day by day, they're slaughtered too. I feel very bad, and all the condolences goes to those people who are losing their life. And I hope one day humanity gonna be, come up, and our politician who serving the country, and the people of Washington, they realize that it has to be end, and all the violence should be stopped, and kids, women not be killed and slaughtered. Thank you very much to come here and give us opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, city council report?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hassan.
Dear Hamtramck residents, I do have respect with my mayor and all the elected official. We do have a very good relationship. So the reason the newspapers say alone, I wanna clarify that. When the question came, did you guys go together or he go alone? I said he go alone. And next day, I saw the Facebook picture, and I called Mr. Mayor, we've been talking very closely, like Mayor Protam said, we was uncommitted, undecided, primary vote. After primary, we doing lots of observation, and again, I went to the Donald Trump couple of fundraising meeting, and I went to the Warren rally. We wanna see what he clearly said about us, about Muslim, about the immigrant. I never went to the Democrat anywhere. After Warren, we didn't see anything clearly came out from his mouth, foreign policy about the Muslim immigrant, what he previously spoke, did he change his mind? So then, still waiting for, still communicating with Mr. Mayor and the community leaders. Mr. Mayor, did you get anything clarified from him, anything talking about, good thing about us? He's, I'm still waiting for, not talking. We wait, we wait, we wait. We have to wait until Pennsylvania statement, Pennsylvania State, Donald Trump made the statement, I have the video, and I have three video ready, if you want. I spoke about the Yemeni as the terrorist. So my brother fellow Yemeni is not the terrorist. My brother fellow, I'm nineteen ninety-five, from here up to now, I see them very good people. So I cannot believe that. He can make the statement, some of the Yemeni is terrorist. I have no problem, he can mention the Houthi name, I don't have no problem. He's saying general, the kids who is less than sixteen years, including all Yemeni, he is the terrorist. I cannot take it as a human, as a Muslim. So, and I call Mr. Mayor again, I call the, all the leaders in Yemeni leaders in Hamtramck. So of course, he's gonna change his statement. One leader said within one hour, he's One leader said within one hour, he's gonna change the statement, no problem, sir. We want to wait for change, still waiting for change. Did not get change anything, it's coming, more problem after that, after our observation. I did not stop. Then another video came and released to the. Radical Islamic terrorist. I stopped. Excuse me, sir, I'm speaking. So the journalist asking him, the one bathroom, you gonna accept your mom indirectly, your daughter indirectly, anybody, same bathroom he gonna use, I don't have no problem. How come as a human, I'm gonna use same bathroom together with my kids, my daughter? Question to him. Second, he just had the Muslim radical terrorist. And the next one was Muslim killing all the Bar people, all the LGBTQ people. It's not LGBTQ people, they're killing American citizen, that is the video. So show me one proof Muslim kill America, one Bar people, one LGBTQ people. No, so his mentality is still try to take the revenge. I understand Democrat doing the very bad job. There is a couple of thing we don't like it, we hate it. I have to compare who is the best one from the worst. You want to keep the Gulf alive or you want to keep only Gaza alive? My theory, I want to keep the Gulf alive. If this guy go, next day he's gonna attack somewhere else, is his mentality, that's why I feel. I spoke to Kamala Harris, couple of second. I spoke to the governor, I spoke to the two states, US senator. Speak to them, you guys have to change a lot of thing, what we don't like. They say, okay, we can compromise, no problem. $10 million, it is not true. It is came from the other side who was criticizing us. We has the ever great number of the funding from Michigan State is the last year. We all agree. I have all the respect, anything I do, most of the time, I speak to the, my mayor and my councils. So after that statement, we wait for three days. Then I spoke to the Yemeni leaders. They said someone made mistake, still not changing, we might gonna change. Before I come here, most of the leader told me, we might gonna change in tonight. He don't make clear a statement about what he did previously. I only looking for modify. If he modify his space, all Yemeni is not the terrorist, I will change within second, no problem.
Alright.
So hold on, hold on, I'm going down.
Keep.
Excuse me, hold on.
Will you keep your?
One more, one more.
I'm saying, so you don't forget.
Oh, it's the one.
You said you want change.
Hold on, one, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Second one, he has to say all Muslim is not terrorist. That's one he has to make, two statement, okay? Two statement, clear. Again, after two statement, even though Mr. Mayor, he changed his face, he already told you. He made your nickname as a terrorist, not me.
Alright.
He got a chance, excuse me, I have time?
No, 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 no more than five minutes, the rules.
Okay. So do you do that?
Yeah.
I'm not leaving Dearborn City, I'm leaving Hamtramic City. My Hamtramic City people, I don't see here.
Thank you. So just to clarify, you, before we went to Warren, you texted in a group and you said you going to Harris. And then the next day you texted me that you want to come to Warren. So you decided before he said.
What's that?
You decide before anything.
What's that?
But keep your word.
I said two statement, not one.
You said.
No, I said two statement, very clear. You are Muslim man, I'm Muslim.
You're not gonna change, I know, there would be clarification coming soon.
Yeah.
You're not gonna change, I know.
Well, I take the challenge from you there, I'm running against you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I get challenge from you there, I take challenge from you there, I'm running against you.
Mr. Council, please, this is not a political debate we are here. Look, we need to run the city business. Can you wait, let me respond to him.
No, just, I just want to clarify, but just to key things that no, you guys are talking about policy, policies, okay? Talk about anything beyond that you can.
Yeah.
Well, good luck. So remember, you'll have to resign from the city council to run against me and you will lose both.
That's up. It's okay, it's up to me.
Okay, good luck. Councilman Ruhay.
Yeah, thank you, thank you everyone. Thanks for the person that came from Dearborn. But this is not a political debate, we come here to express your opinion, that's good, but we don't have any debate here. We still love our mayor and whatever he decided, this is personal decision, the council, this is their personal decision. Coming here and comparing each other and targeting council, but also mayor and creating the issue, I don't really appreciate it. Let's leave our city alone, we get along and everybody has their right to practice their democracy in this country. This is a democratic country. And I could say a lot of things about Democrat and Republican, but as I say, this is not the platform to debate about political issues. Let's have a good night, everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had, I wanted to.
No, sorry, you can give me another form.
Did you give me a form?
Yeah, I did, you look for both.
Yes, so the next, the comment are coming soon, the second round is coming, so.
Oh.
Alright, so with that. You can.
Hold on a minute, if you listen. I want to first thank everybody who showed up here today. As many of you know, I have been a long life Republican voter. I always supported Republican candidates locally, believing in the values of the party that stands for. For years, I have wanted a change in my community aspect of Republican Party. Unfortunately, the party never seemed to take in the shoes of building bridges with the minor communities like mine. In the recent months, however, I was encouraged as the mayor and my colleagues engage with many members of the Trump campaign, addressing concerns and working to foster a stronger connection between our community and the Republican Party.
You can't explicitly endorse anybody or.
It's not endorsement.
Okay, it's not even, yeah, you can talk about policy stuff.
Policy, it's not endorsement, it's not. I was thrilled to see progress in the opening of the first Republican office in Wayne County, Michigan, right here in the city of Hamtramic. The Republican ceremony on October 5th, 2024 was a moment that our many leaders have attended, full of hope and excitement. But on the same day during the rally in Pennsylvania, former President Donald Trump made a deeply troubled statement. He said something along the line of, people are coming out of Yemen, known terrorists being released into our country from unknown places. These people are crazy. As a Yemeni Muslim American, we are still wearing this historical clothing of the Republican office in Wayne County. He made those harmful remarks about the Yemeni people. It's unbelievable that he under say such a thing. I know that most Yemenis who came to this great nation, this, this, did so through family petitions as qualified refugees and students, and so on. I have never heard that the US government claimed that any Yemeni or Yemeni American was vulnerable in the 9/11 attacks or any other attacks of terror in this country. In fact, there has never been any report of a Yemeni harming this nation. My members of the Yemeni American community was hurt and disappointed by the former president remarks. They now questioned the trust we placed on the Republican Party, feeling betrayed. Have to assure them that the party shares our values, that the word made some of them concerned and their support. Feel as though we have been stabbed in the back by some of we believe could unite us. I hope that former president will address these comments or remarks about Yemen and the Yemeni people. I stand with my mayor as he has heard those comments or remarks. And right away, he contacted campaign and people who are in charge of Trump's campaign. And he wanted the former president to clarify his remarks and change his words. So I still stand and I will still vote for Republican Party no matter what. I do not stand or vote for any.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, thank you, we respect your opinion, everyone here, everyone's opinion. So I never wanted to talk about it, what's going on, but I have to respond to some statements that we are inaccurate. So with that, we move back to the second round of the meeting. You want to say something, others?
Thank you for everyone to come today to the meeting, city of Hamtramic. Thank you for the people that came from Dearborn and the people come in Hamtramic, leader and another one, thank you very much. I'd like to mention something. I'm working with the people, working with Hamtramic. Anyone for the district in Wayne County from the state, who is the people working with Hamtramic, we support him. I don't care who's this. When people working for Hamtramic, we agree with him. State Senate, State Trump, Wayne County, who the people working with that one, I'm working with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Ms. Paula Thomas, please.
Hassan Al, Dearborn resident, three minutes.
Good afternoon. Today, the vice president was in the eastern market. He addressed that there will be a ceasefire. So Donald Trump will do a ceasefire. You want to play the recording?
Now, second, we're about here Americans, we look, we're thrilled to have the mayor's support and I'm not meeting to your wish, I'm not meeting any Arab American or Muslim American leaders on this particular trip, though we certainly will in future trips to Michigan. You know, it's sick, I'm gonna be in Michigan like, you know, thirty times. And to be clear with the fact checkers, when I said I would be in Michigan thirty times, that was a slight exaggeration. That was something. That was exaggeration due to, I don't know, maybe like six or seven times over the next twenty-seven days. But look, I think the reason why, and it is one of these issues where obviously, Arab Americans often have different views than Jewish Americans on what's going on in Israel, what's going on in Palestine. And I think most Jewish Americans and Arab Americans recognize that what's in the best interest of Israel and Palestine is peace and not.
Peace in the Middle East.
Peace, not the Donald Trump.
Hold on, hold on. See, what you're not understanding, you're criticizing Donald Trump and I understand.
Hassan, talk to the mayor.
Okay, Chair, Mohammed Hassan is under investigation with Dana Nasr. So what he's trying to do is go flip to the Republican Party, not mean flip to the Democrat Party, because he's under investigation. So he's trying to cut a deal, I will give you the votes in exchange to dismiss the accusations against him. That's what's probably happened. Or he's running against you and he wants to criticize you and make you look better in front of the community. But at the end of the day, Kamala Harris has blood on her hands. Who is in office today? Kamala Harris. Who's the vice president? Kamala Harris. Sleepy Joe can't even speak two words. So I'm gonna tell everybody, my vote will be Donald J. Trump, it will be a red ticket. I'm not voting Democrat and I never will. And I will stand with the Hamtramic mayor. And when you are mayor, I will endorse him and I will make sure that people vote for him because he's a good mayor. And you guys want to criticize a gentleman sitting over here that does this for peanuts? That stood with the community when nobody ever stood with the community? This guy has done everything for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill Meyer?
Alright, so I had a suggestion on how we could solve the problem with the drones. I think this reminded me of a problem we had once before in the city where we had some great salesmen come here to council and sell you parking meters in Joseph Campo and nobody complained, nobody argued, it was just one side of the story. And it sounded really great, all the great things, and then we found out all the bad things. And now we're really screwed because that was a bad thing that we assigned them to. Well, I'm not saying this is a bad thing, the drone thing, but I think discovering that, there's two sides to the issue and we only heard the positive side because our chief is a great salesman. He's also very well loved, he's one of our best chiefs ever. But I think Councilman Rafai did represent the people's voice. There are people here, you guys, who represent the public and we're not hearing that, we're only hearing them through you. So what I suggest is, there should be a public forum. They should present their thing to the public and let the public explain why they're against this. And maybe you can assuage them and change their minds.
Exactly.
And then the people will be behind it and support it, I think that's what should happen. Secondly, I want to say thank you so much for the award, for my activist award. Want to let you know that I'm an activist most of my life and there's two things that I don't need, I don't, I don't work for money. Activists don't work for money and they don't work for awards. They work because they're committed to change society. So even though I didn't need this award, well, of course, I honor your award, thank you so much for recognizing me. But all, there's many people in the city who have done things for no money to help them. So thirdly, I want to mention that you guys signed on to Move the Money Resolution, if you remember that correctly, a while back. And this is rolling, it's rolling into a big thing right now. We're having our first public event coming up in a couple of weeks on Saturday, October 26th, 3 o'clock, at Wayne County Community College North West Campus, I'll give you flyers later. But as you know, the reasons why you signed this resolution and all agreed on it is because our military budget is ridiculously high, we're reaching trillions of dollars. And the cities are suffering, people are suffering from lack of money across the country. So you know how this money can be used better for human needs. So our program is called Moving Our Money From Warfare to Human Needs. Can I get on, man? Okay, so we have people involved in this, like Rashida Tlaib. She's, she actually has a bill in Congress right now that's called the Stop Politicians Profiting From War Bill. And there's many politicians who vote because they're getting a lot of money. I know you guys aren't, we have no money here to give you. But there's many big politicians. As a matter of fact, one guy said, you know, politicians should dress like NASCAR drivers and have their sponsors on their shirts, you know, so you know who they're voting for. Because people pay lots of money to these politicians to vote a certain way. Israel has an AIPAC and it's a tremendous influence this country on politicians. We also should know that Barbara Lee and Congresswoman from California, Mark Buchanan, a senator from Wisconsin, a bill sponsored a bill called People Before the Pentagon. That means put people before war and spend money on cities. We're gonna have them involved in this event, we have many speakers, Mary Waters from the city of Detroit. And we want you to support this because you did support us with the Move the Money Resolution and we hope you can help us spread the word that we have to spend more money on people and less on killing.
Thank you, Bill. Abdul Hussein, Hamtramic president, three minutes.
Hello, Assalamualaikum. I'm here to just support our mayor for his decision. Let me tell your brother Mohammed, Yemen is.
I'm sorry you have to tell the mayor not.
Mr. Mayor, all council, our country has been in war for almost eleven years. We suffer so much and we know who's behind it. So don't tell me that couple words or whatever is gonna change the policy, no. We know that Donald Trump, whatever in his mind, he's gonna save, okay? But he promised that he's gonna end the war. But he promised that he's gonna end the war. If he end the war, he can tell me terrorists, he can tell me anything. I want it stopped for war and let all people live with life. We need peace. We need, we are tired. We are tired to see people killed. Almost one year, you see children not being found for one year, they are underground. We know who's the terrorists, okay? And I know he's gonna shut his mind, he's gonna say sorry. When he come to Mashkin, he gonna say, "I did mistake in this and that, this politics." But we have somebody right now who's bombing, who's throwing muscle, okay? We have somebody right now who hit us, who killed some people right now. Let's say he gonna say terrorists, we know who you are. We've been, I've been here forty-two years, I've been working hard, I know what I did, I never been to the jail. So it doesn't get, it's not gonna change anything. People know who's in peace, who's not, okay? And right now, take a look to, not to the TV, take a look to the media, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, you can find who's terrorists. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Najee Al Muthajee?
From Durban.
Durban resident.
Good evening again, everybody. So, to be honest, you know, I mentioned before, I came to this country, I've been here for forty, more than forty years, and we have to be honest with each other. When I heard the statement, you know, of the former president, yeah, it hurt very deeply, no question about it. It was humiliating in a way, it was deeply saddened and hurt by it, you know? But, but this is not about my feelings, it's not about my feelings, it's not about, with all due respect, it's not about your feelings. I think the last time I actually cried was, you know, fifty-five years ago when my brother died, my young brother. And within the last year, I think I've cried like five or six times, like tears coming down my eyes. And yesterday was October 7th, everybody's talking about the Israeli hostages and, okay, they're civilians, a hundred percent, but nobody has been talking about the Palestinian lives, the Lebanese lives that have been lost. And for me, this is more important than anything else. This is a picture of one of the little girls, her name is Manak, she lost her father. When the Israeli army was trying to recover the hostages, they killed several hundred people. And then she lost her eye, there's no healthcare there, so they can't really patch her up, she can't get anything, she can't put a prosthetic eye in there. And she has a young daughter, excuse me, a young sister, now she has to help care for her. And so for me, it's all about ending the violence, ending the violence that's going on. In this administration, unfortunately, they've been there for a year, we know there's not gonna be any change. I'm just hoping and praying that with somebody else in office, we can stop the carnage and at least give peace a chance. That's really my only focus. And the last thing I wanna say is this, we have the Ukraine situation, Americans here were hurting very badly economically, and hundreds of billions of dollars have been sent to Ukraine. And this administration, this administration, the war could have been stopped two years ago. They sent the Prime Minister of Britain to Ukraine, and they strong-armed Zelensky to stop from signing the peace deal. It's ridiculous, we have to give peace a chance, and really, that's what it's all about for me. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mohammed?
Shajra.
Oh, again, Mohammed Shajra.
Mohammed Shajra from Durban. Assalamualaikum. Hi again. First thing, I think Mohammed Hassan is lying. He's talking about his oath, save the Muslims from something and something, and he said, Amir Arabi go to Dona'traam without asking him, and he contacted Kamala Harris without asking the Senate Council over Amir Arabi. That's a... She is a liar. I will send message in Arabic for the resident in Michigan, actually specific in Hamtramck. Subahat Khilam, Insha'Allah, balwa al-arabiya. Lainna, a lot of people in the home, they don't understand English. That's why I need to send the message because my brothers already speak in English, I'm good with that. Awwalun, lisaal al-jaliha al-arabiya wa al-islamiya, la tu siddiun ala dinan yuridun an yisbahu fi al-ma'a al-ghakr, liyajal al-jaliha laa qimta laha wa laa mustabba laa uladha. Al-jaliha yemeniyan mun zimna al-jaliyat al-mohammashah, ala mar asanawat al-madhiya, alati laa yurid laa al-kathiron, al-tahrul min al-tahmish. Ilaa metaa, say'al, au settal al-jaliya yemeniya tassadak ashab al-ghbul al-dzayqah. La tu siddiqun man yurid taksim aswatakun bil-akwal. Sowutu l'al-hizba al-akhbar au bghair miltzim. La yurudun, la yurudun ala kum al-gair, bil yuridun taksim aswatakun. Ya abnail jaliya al-arabiya fil waliyat al-mutahda al-amirkiya, konu ahrar, laa tekonu gabeedan. Laa tekonu gabeedan l'al-hizba al-demokratii wa ajinadakun fil menntika, soa min yemeniin au arab, au min amerikan anfusum. Wa min ashab al-wajabat al-sari'ah wa al-dhobor al-aylami. Frustatukum alaan, wa ma'abna arabi. Sayyid Insha'Allah, one minute. Frustatukum an tithmatu ma'adet madina hamtramek, wa laa amal khelfa, wa idha afta a'ynu, wa idha sa'at adgamu. Ya abnail jaliya yemeniya, awadakum amana fi a'gnafukum. Hada itahkam alaykum ashab al-shudhuji al-jansi. Ya abnail jaliya al-arabiya, la tu siddiqun fil tikhwifat, men tattal al-alaqat al-kharijiyah wal hijra wal masadat. Hadihi dagaayat intihabiyah l'al-hizba al-demokratii, lijali aswatakun mushetta. Anzuro ilaa awadakum. Anzuro ilaa men, ala men, qamta al-habga fi ghazza, fi Lebanon, fi Yemen, wa al-ghraq, ala b'tum, ala aydi al-hizba al-demokratii. Ya abnail jaliya al-ibnaniya, ilaa metaa settalun, taht al-hizba yadgam ibadat biladukum wa yaktir nisa'ukum wa adfaalukum wa yushardt, wa yuhadim manaziukum. Hayaa, iftegu d'gan nafaqat al-qiadaat al-kadiga, al-taswira, ilaa jawab al-qiadaa al-haqiyya, alati tathkam b-masalih abn'akum, watan'ur ilaa mustabba lakum. Ya abnail jaliya...
Mr. Mayor, do you want to get extra minutes?
Please. Go ahead. Ya abnail jaliya al-arabiya, ilaa metaa sana tal, katayun magsos al-jnagh, la yastatiy an yasal ilaa kursi al-qiadaa. Afiqun mun aflatukum, barakallah, mikum. Assalamualaikum.
Carol Rakowski, Hamtramck president, Carol?
Can we get a little translation of what you just said? Mayor, you can translate what you said.
Sorry, Carol.
So basically, he's repeating what the previous people commented. He's calling people to support me, basically, and riding behind me, and he's telling them about the disappointments from the current leadership. He's calling the Yemeni people and the Lebanese to learn a lesson about what's happening, that people are being killed by the current administration. So he's calling people to basically support someone else other than the current administration so they can protect their people back home and protect their values and family values here, and riding behind the new leadership and that will value their support. That's basically what I did.
Carol, thank you, Carol. You might need to lower the mic a little. Nope, nope, it's not. Can you help her, please? It bends.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Rakowski. I live at the Hamtramck City Plaza. The reason why I'm here because the mosque on Holbrook, they're calling prayers way too loud, and they're screaming on the top of their lungs. Something has to be done about this, because there's people at the Hamtramck City Plaza that are sick, and they're complaining, but I'm the only one that's come here to let yours know. I don't have nothing against the mosque, it's just a call of prayer. It's way too loud. There's no reason for them to scream on the top of their lungs. And then you gotta shut your windows, and you can still hear them right through the windows. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll reach out. Well, city manager will reach out.
Did you hear that, Carol? The city manager's gonna reach out to the mosque and see about that.
Thank you.
No problem. Hadwan, Hadwan?
Hello, everybody. Yeah, what Carol came to talk about today, I think is exactly what we should be discussing in city council meetings, you know, it's someone from the public, they have a problem, they came to the city council to discuss it. I think that, you know, continuing to allow debate about political choices, affiliates, endorsements, it's a huge mistake. I mean, it's not the type of visual we want for the city. You know, we want people to feel comfortable coming to a city council meeting, people who live here, addressing the problems that they have, we need to be talking about what we can do to improve the city. That should be the only type of forum that this hall should be discussing, in my opinion. You know, like, to continuously go back and forth about who's endorsing who, it's a mistake. Endorse who you want on your own time, on your separate time, keep it out of city council meetings. We should be talking about how we're gonna clean our streets, we should be talking about how we're gonna improve the lives of people who live in the city. That's all that should be being discussed. You know, it's a mistake to continue to address people's public comments. We have known agitators attending city council meetings. You know, to the police chief, I have a ton of respect to the police chief. I see what he's doing online, I've seen what he's been reporting to do on the news, he has my respect, but it's very disheartening that we have someone who's a public agitator, does not live in the city, and you've continuously given him a pat in the back today and allowed him to talk over people during public hearings. That is not right. We have to, like, put ourselves to a certain standard. We cannot allow people from outside of the city to come in and tell us what we should do, how we should behave, get us agitated, get us worked up, and feed off of that. We're better than that. You know, we are better than that. We cannot just look at the majority of people who live in the city and say, "That's who we're gonna represent." We all are hurting from what's happening in Gaza. It hurts all of us, it hurts us to see what's happening in Lebanon. But this is not the forum that's gonna solve that. This forum is only gonna solve the problems of the people who are living in the city. That's what it's gonna solve. If everyone voted Republican, if everyone voted Democrat, it is not gonna change the outcome of the election. We have to understand that. You know, like, if we want to battle those problems, we battle them in a different way. But in the city, we battle things that affect everyone in the city, not just people of the majority, but people of the minority, too. We cannot all of a sudden, you know, immigrants became the majority of the city, so there's no longer a minority, that is the worst possible look that we can get. We have to be able to hear everyone across the island. You know, we gotta stop this. I have respect for everyone sitting in the seats, you know, in front of me, but guys, like, we are better than this. It is extremely disheartening to hear this type of speech at a city council meeting. I implore you guys to put the people of the city of Hamtramck first. Thank you.
Thank you. You have Hamalani?
Mowei.
Is that how you say it?
An Mowei.
An Mowei? Thanks.
I've been here in Michigan for fifty-five, fifty-six years. I worked at Hamtramck Dodge Plant for eight years. I'm here to support Mayor Khalib for his choice. This is free country. You can endorse, you can vote, you can support whoever you want, okay? And that's the person's choice. I was once Republican. My good friend was the head of the party here in Michigan, and he put me into it at the time Reagan, that was Frank Stella, if anyone know him. But I don't vote for the party, I vote the person, whoever deserved my vote. We should respect that, we should respect him. He did good for the city of Hamtramck, he did good. We take it from bankrupt until surplus, and we should be supported and respect his choice. That's all I have to say. Good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the South Republican.
Thank you, I just wanna let you guys know that personally, I did not discuss anything, I didn't start anything politics. I had to respond to some deceiving information that I heard. But personally, I didn't discuss my endorsement, I didn't discuss anything political in my report, you heard me, I continued to distribute the certificate in my report time. But when I heard some disturbing information, I had to respond to it. That's what we want, we want people to be here to tell us what are the issues in the city, because we spend a lot of time focusing on unnecessary issues. We have priorities that we should focus on, we know that, but also, we welcome everybody to come to the city council. I mean, we can't stop anyone from speaking their minds and telling us what they think, what they want to say. So, just clarification, and I think with that, we, and I think we have people who are good to run for city council or other stuff, we welcome everybody, including Mr. Hadwan. I encourage you to run for a public office, we would like to see you somewhere to serve. So that's all. We come to the end of our meeting today, and we call for a adjournment.
I motion?
I'll second.
All right, one in favor?
Five.
God bless America. Eight fifty-three. Thank you.